Okay, we're gonna call this meeting to order tonight. Um, any public comment, Jamie?
Uh, nothing beyond what's in my report.
Okay, very good. We'll move on to the business of the board, the approval of the minutes from the August 26, 2020 general meeting. Did anyone have any comments, questions, corrections? If not, may I have a motion to approve the minutes from the August 26 meeting?
Cindy?
Thank you, Cindy. A second?
This is Jill, I'll second.
Thanks, Jill. Any discussion? Will, will you call the roll, please?
Sure, Ms. Bednarski.
Yes.
Mr. Sensoni.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Ms. Fisher.
Yes.
Ms. Stickney.
Yes.
Ms. James.
Yes.
Mr. Glover.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, we're gonna move on to the Finance Committee report. Will and Melissa? We had, I think, the world's shortest Finance Committee meeting last week, which was nice. And I'm just gonna let Will speak to the notes and the report that he's given us today. Will?
Uh, yeah, I mean, as per the usual, I'll open it up to questions. One of the things that you'll notice in the notes is that we'll talk about later the opening up the Special Revenue Fund to account for the CARES Act dollars. That's kind of one of the, the odd issues of the month. Otherwise, it's been, it's relatively normal in terms of revenue and expenses. I will say that we are kind of right on target for our property tax revenue, what we budgeted, um, which is great. Um, we're, I, we're not gonna see a, a major issue there. And I, we weren't anticipating one, but it's nice that it actually came in what we thought, anyway. Um, and the PLF has done better than we thought. And again, we, we discussed this in finance. I think, um, the economy has done better than people expected. And Ohio has done okay with managing the pandemic as best as it can be managed. Our real concern and what we're gonna be talking about soon, and Jamie and I will be working together on this, is the, the future and budgeting and the long-term impact on the PLF, which I think is gonna be more than the short-term impact that we've seen, which has been relatively minor.
Right, right.
Those are some of my highlights, but I'll, I'll open it up to any questions from anybody on the finance packet.
Anyone have any questions on the check register or anything? As we talked about, um, yeah, 2020 is probably not the year to worry about. It'll be 2021, even 2022, right, Will?
Yeah.
We'll just have to keep a close eye and be conservative.
Right.
Which is kind of our MO, anyway.
Yeah, I think we, we have a conservative approach. I, I always have with this. I think it, when I first came onto this board, I, I felt that, um, right away, too, that everyone on the, at the time, all the board members were conservative in terms of managing our, our finances and being fiscally responsible. And that's, that's kind of one of the number-one responsibilities of board members. So everyone really takes that seriously on this board. Uh, we'll continue to do that. I think we will have some different scenarios that we'll lay out for forecasting and budgeting in the future. If you sit, um, and I'm not sure if my forecast was included with the board packet. It was? Okay. So I modified that because it's been better than those original scenarios that I had that were, that were, you know, big percentage declines in, in our major revenues, and we haven't seen that, so. But I, I will use that kind of model, um, to, to look forward and, and do more than just this month-to-month, year-end 2020. I'll do more of a year-over-year kind of look going forward. And again, the ultimate goal here is to make sure that we're being responsible, but we're also, um, keeping an eye out for that time where we have to plan, which we don't wanna do, but if we ever have to go back to voters, which I, again, I don't anticipate. I don't wanna put that in anybody's mind, but that's what we're watching out for, making sure that our funds and, and the library is stable and our funds are stable.
One of the, um, I think one of the things, uh, as we get into the budget process, and, um, it's very early on my end at this point, um, I've gone through and updated some spreadsheets. I've gone through and put 2019 numbers, the actual numbers in, because those are, um, those are hardcoded, and those are things where we try to look at trends, um, even trends across the line items. But I think that, um, one of the things that we, we should think about, and, um, maybe at the next, um, meeting, or if you wanted to have some conversations about it, is whether or not 2021 and 2022 are the years where we maybe dip a bit more into those, um, other special revenue funds. Well, I guess they're not, I guess they're just funds. Um, you know, the Bell Mole, the Nylund Bequest, um, and the Mackey. And if that's something where we look at, um, spending those down versus, um, kind of the, the little bit that we've taken from them. Um, so I think that's something to think about. I'm not necessarily saying that we need to do it, but I would think of, of any of the years and thinking of even the, the, um, the near past, um, this is probably gonna be one of the, um, worst situations that we've probably been in.
Right, and Jamie knows my thoughts on this. My feeling is, um, we should avoid carrying too much money in those funds. Um, and Cindy, you can remember these discussions from the past, too. We just never felt as a board that those families donated those funds to just let them sit there and accumulate and accumulate. And I know Jamie and Trent feel the same way, but they are getting to that point where it's starting to me to feel a little uncomfortable. And, um, possibly, like Jamie said, time to look at not just spending them for the sake of spending them, but using them as part of our budgeting process, maybe a little more than we have in the past.
Yeah.
Oddly.
Yes?
I think that's a reasonable thought, because back from my foundation days, when we had some endowment funds come in, people kept asking us, you know, "Why don't, why aren't you spending my endowment?" We had to say to them that we couldn't. So I do think that people that would, that give donations want them to be used within a reasonable timeframe.
I do, when I donate.
Yeah, right, exactly. And, and the other, the other question I have looking forward, uh, both comments from Will and Jamie is, you know, how easy is it going to be to forecast into 2021, 2022? Uh, you know, is the data gonna be fairly reliable, or is it gonna be, you know, not really knowing what, you know, what we're gonna be dealing with as we went forward?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think you do, we do get a lot of information, and because of what's going on, there's a lot of communication from OLC and, uh, the Budget Commission, and, uh, there's different forecasts that are out there already. Uh, I don't know how reliable they're gonna be, uh, because already OBM, Ohio Budget and Management Commission, they, they were already kind of off, just in this short period, where they redid their numbers sort of after the pandemic hit, and things came in much better than they anticipated. So how reliable are the forecasts and the information that I'm gonna use to build forecasts? I'm not certain about that. But the important thing we'll say is that we'll do a, a couple of different scenarios, and I think we'll, we'll meet somewhere in the middle where we're conservative. But ultimately, too, just so we're aware, is that whatever we lay out in a budget, we're, we're also smart people. Um, the library's nimble in terms of, we're not just gonna, the, the revenue's no longer there. That doesn't mean we just keep spending on that same path that we budgeted. We, we would, we would make moves before we just started, you know, willy-nilly spending and dipping into our reserves and things like that.
Yeah, no willy-nilly.
Right. And, and to touch base real quick on the funds, um, from, from my perspective, you're absolutely right. I look at the total dollar funds that we have as a whole. Um, it, it's much more of a eye test, spending, spending people's money that they donated. That's the important part of that. It's supplementing the general fund with this money that people donated to be used for their, the purpose that they wished it to be. Ultimately, we look at all the funds from my perspective and say we're in good financial, financial position. Using those other funds is really just like the eye test. We want, we want to please the people that donated it and, and let them see that we're actually using the funds that they gave us.
Right, right. I, I think, I, if I recall correctly, there was no legal language that, that limited the spending or that required that it sort of be held in for any period of time. Is that correct, Jamie?
Um, so, um, we, yeah, we revisited this. This might have been when you first came on, Melissa. Um, 'cause we spent the money out of one of them for the parking lot project. So initially, uh, this money was given to the library unrestricted. The Board of Trustees at that time restricted the funds, and they limited the amount, um, that they would, uh, spend from those funds each year. And then, um, not too long ago, and I've, and I, I've, I've got the, I don't have them handy, but I've got the resolution. Um, the board then agreed, um, that we wouldn't limit necessarily the amount, um, that was, that could be taken from those funds. So I think it was really that shift, um, uh, the, the shift in thought process to where we are now. So yes, theoretically, if we wanted to, we could spend all of the money in those funds. Um, but they do still have, um, they are restricted in the sense that the boards at the time have, um, have it in place that they're only to be used on certain types of expenditures.
Right, okay. I do recall that conversation. I just wanted to revisit it.
Yeah.
Right. Okay, thank you. Um, before we go to the approval of the financial statements, Will, did you want to talk about positive pay?
Yeah, sure. Um, I can't recall if we touched on this in finance, or if we touched on it in the last board meeting, yeah.
Yeah.
Positive pay is, um, something that we've implemented. It, it really will mitigate fraud. And what it is, is if a check is written by our finance group, Rhonda, we also upload that check number and the dollar amount to US Bank, and they won't clear any check that doesn't match what we've told them we've written it for. So the idea is if there's ever any fraudulent check that tries to go through our bank account, it will be bounced because it does not match with our positive pay upload. So it's just another step to protect our accounts. Um, you know, it's something that, uh, I've actually at one of the library conferences heard about initially, and this was maybe a few years ago now, but, um, there's been some libraries and, and other local governments that have been hit with some different fraud situations, or their, their payroll account was cleared out by, um, you know, some sort of malware or virus or something.
Right.
And this is just something that's gonna protect us from that. Uh, or, or just the, the fraud that we all are probably more aware of, which is just somebody faking a check and trying to get it through, and, uh, this will definitely stop that, too, so.
Okay.
And, and it's been going, uh, relatively well. Maybe Jamie can speak to that more, but I've spoken to Rhonda, and she seems to, to think it doesn't, it doesn't cause too much extra time on her part. Uh, so it's, it's totally worth it, and I think it's going pretty smooth.
Yeah, I would agree. Based on my conversations with Rhonda, she's completely comfortable with it, understands the importance of it. Um, I think she just, it's an extra login for her, like, once a mon, uh, once a week, but, um, it's, yeah, as far as I know, it's, it's just part of her routine now.
I, I can't recall. Is there a charge associated with that?
Um, I'll have, I'll have to check.
I think so.
I, I think it's, if it is, it's very minor. It's like, it's like, it could be like $25 a year. Like, it's not,
Oh.
it's nothing, really.
Okay.
I, I'll double-check that, though, because there was a conversation that I had with, um, the gentleman's name is Steve, but the, it was his kind of boss, maybe, that I talked to. Uh, so I, I'll, I'll look at that and figure it out.
Okay.
Audrey, I have one more thing. I'm sorry. I wasn't quick enough with the un-mute button when Jamie was talking about the other funds.
Sure.
Did, did Jamie, did you, uh, did I understand you to say that the board basically put restrictions on those funds at one point, uh, as to what they would be used for?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, so, so basically, so that was a board resolution at the time, which we can have a new board resolution since the people didn't restrict the funds. Uh, the board did. We, and my understanding is, we could probably over, override their resolution with another resolution in today's world.
Yes, you could. Um, and i- if it came to that, I think that they're broad enough in spectrum that, so for instance, the, um, um, the Bell Mole is generally a children's, so it's the benefit of the children. So, you know, we've been taking some areading out of that, but we could find other children's things, and then rather running them, rather than running them through the general fund, we could run them through, uh, the Bell Mole Fund, so that would be how we would go about it. So that's one way to do it, or if we felt like, wow, we don't really wanna, you know, mess with this, the board could also do a resolution, yes.
Okay.
But I, I think that we're okay within the broad spectrum that they're already, you know, one is, one is basically, um, uh, children's, one is, um, buildings and grounds, and another one is, is a general public good, which we generally use for adult and children, or, I'm sorry, adult and teen. So I think that of the three, they cover the aspects that we would need.
Right, yeah, okay, that's fair. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments about the financial statements for August? If not, may I have a motion to approve?
So moved. This is Melissa.
Thank you, Melissa. A second?
I can second. This is Jenny.
Thank you, Jenny. Any discussion? Roll call, please, Will?
Sure, Ms. Bednarski.
Yes.
Mr. Sensoni.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Ms. Fisher.
Yes.
Ms. Stickney.
Yes.
Ms. James.
Yes.
Mr. Glover.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, we can move on to the August gift report. Uh, looks like page 16 of the document. Any questions or comments regarding the gift report for August? Jamie, did you have anything to add about this?
Um, no, I thought it was pretty self-explanatory. Um, Marge was a longtime Women's Committee member. Um, so that is something that they were honoring her, um, with those donations. Um, and those are in the form of, of, um, books. Uh, the other one was monetary. Um, so it's, it's kind of nice to see, um, a little bit, you know? Um, it's, our gift report hasn't necessarily ever been much, but I think that, you know, this is just one more of those things where it's like, all right, we're, we're kind of getting back on track and, um, you know, so.
Right, and a wonderful tribute to Marge, too, for her service. Okay, if there aren't any questions or comments, may I have a motion to approve the August gift report?
So moved. Cindy?
Do I have a second?
This is Jill, I'll second.
Thank you, Jill. Any discussion? Roll call, please?
Ms. Bednarski.
Yes.
Mr. Sensoni.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Ms. Fisher.
Yes.
Ms. Stickney.
Yes.
Ms. James.
Yes.
Mr. Glover.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone. Okay, on page 17, then, is that PO for Bluestone. Jamie or Will, did we have anything to add about this, or?
Nothing to add from me.
Okay, just.
Uh, no, they, I mean, they've started the work. We, I think we've, I, I, I've, I've thought we kind of exhausted, um, the communication over this, we, you know, but, um, but it is a large dollar amount, so. Um, they did start the work. This, of course, was approved, um, two months ago by the board, and then last month, the board again approved, um, the actual contract language and allowed me to sign that contract.
Right.
Uh, we did receive the check from the foundation, so I believe it's next month's gift report will, um, will show that. Um, so, uh, and they have started, uh, a little bit of the work in the auditorium, and they're waiting on some parts at this point, but, um, the network cabling is done, and, uh, they pulled out some of the old speakers. Um, they did, um, so they, like I said, they were having a little bit of shipping issues, but, um, for the most part, we seem to still be on track with the end of October. We were trying to get, um, there's a program that, uh, I guess Adult is doing, and, and on the middle of October, and we were hoping to have, uh, at least the auditorium done by then, but it, we're gonna kind of have to play it by year. And it, it, it doesn't depend on it being done, but it would, it just would have been nice, um, to be able to use the new equipment if it, um, was finished, so. Um, but other than that, no, no real issues. Peter's, um, fine with what they're doing. And by the way, Peter was not able to make it tonight. He had a, some scheduling conflict with, uh, family, so.
Okay, all right. Okay. We'll move on, then, to Resolution 05-20. Will?
Right, so this resolution is to establish the Special Revenue Fund, and this is, uh, as we've discussed in prior board meetings, uh, establishing a fund for the grant monies received for the coronavirus relief fund. Um, we have to establish a separate fund because this is federal, it, it's federal dollars coming through, kind of, uh, funneled through the state to the library, and, uh, it has to be accounted for in its own fund. So we, um, are required to establish, uh, Fund 211, which is the Special Revenue. Did you want me to read the resolution?
No, I don't, I don't think that's necessary. Um, did you want to point out the December 30th date?
Yeah, so, um, I don't know the reasoning behind the date. I really don't.
It doesn't go to the end of the year, if anyone noticed that.
It's December 30th. That, that date is correct. Uh, Audrey reached out to me earlier today and asked, and, uh, I triple-checked, and that is the correct date. Uh, I don't know the reasoning behind it, but it's December.
I don't know. Just don't incur.
Might be because the 31st is a holiday.
Maybe, but there's a lot of holidays in between March 1st and December 30th.
Only thing I can think of.
I know, I know. It's a reach, but maybe. Either that, or someone never caught the mistake, and they'll come back with some kind of
Yeah.
thing that we'll have to redo a resolution for, for one day. Did anyone have any questions about this? It's pretty straightforward. If there are no questions or comments, may I have a motion to approve Resolution Number 05-20? Is it 20 or just 2020?
On the agenda, it says 2020, but it's 05-20 is how we view.
20, okay. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
I'm, thank you, Dave. Second?
Aye.
Second, Melissa.
Thank you, Melissa. Any discussion regarding this? Will, you can call the roll, please?
Ms. Bednarski.
Yes.
Mr. Glover.
Aye.
Ms. Fisher.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Ms. James.
Yes.
Ms. Stickney.
Yes.
Mr. Sensoni.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, moving on to Resolution Number 06-20, that actually adds the money to our fund. Will, did you have anything to add to this? This, again, is pretty self-explanatory.
Right, so now that we've received the money, um, and this is gonna have to be as, I guess, as amended, because the CARES Act Fund is actually Fund 211, not 201.
211. Oh, I see.
But, uh, now that we have the money that, that we've, uh, recognized in the Special Revenue Fund, this is allowing us to appropriate that money and let the county know that we're, we're going to spend that money. Um, so this is updating our appropriations.
Okay, any questions about this? If not, may I have a motion to approve as amended to correct the CARES Act number?
This is Jill, so moved.
Thank you, Jill. Second?
I'll second. It's Cindy.
Thank you, Cindy. Any discussion? Roll call, please?
Ms. Bednarski.
Actually, I, I have a quick question.
Sure.
Is it okay that this one says December 31st and not December 30th?
Yeah, th- this, December 30th, this is the, uh, this is an appropriation for the library's fiscal year.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Will, roll call?
Sure. Ms. Bednarski.
Yes.
Mr. Glover.
Aye.
Ms. Fisher.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Ms. James.
Yes.
Ms. Stickney.
Yes.
Mr. Sensoni.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, we're gonna move on to the TLR quote for the air filtration system. Um, Jamie, we were, um, hoping to get some more specific answers from the last board meeting about some of the questions about the ozone and all of that. And I saw that you got some of the answers. Did you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, um, I will, and I, evidently, not all of the information I had in there got included in the packet. I apologize for that. Um, so we discussed this at the last meeting, um, knowing that we were, uh, that we had been approved to receive the funds. Um, and, um, so, um, a couple of the questions were, um, were specifically the ozone, and whether it produces ozone and how much. And, um, not necessarily that, um, producing ozone is bad, but that too much ozone could be bad. Um, and the system does produce, um, it does produce some ozone, but the ozone stays within the unit, so there's no ozone that is gonna actually get out and into, um, through the ductwork and actually out to where, um, people are. So it would not affect staff. Um, and thi- this is, uh, through the conversation I had with Bill Hathaway, who's, uh, our account manager at, um, um, uh, Total Line Refrigeration, um, which is in line with also what the school said about their system. Um, and, uh, the other thing is, the, you had asked me to reach out and find out what the schools had done. And, um, so I did reach out to Greg Marcus, and he never got back to me, for whatever reason. And so then I asked Trent to reach out to the facilities guy at the school, uh, at the schools, and he was able to get ahold of Sam Gifford. Um, and Sam said, basically, what the schools did was they took a three-pronged approach. Um, they took, um, the balance of, basically, to move a lot of air through the building, and the CDC is basically, um, that's one of their, um, um, priorities is, is getting, um, turning the air over, is what they call it. And, um, so the schools went with trying to flip their air three to five times an hour. We are actually, right now, already in the middle of doing four times an hour with our air. So, um, theoretically, we have, um, four times every hour, so, um, about every 15 minutes, we have completely new air in the building. Um, and then you look at filtering the air, which, of course, we already were filtering. We have filters in place. Um, they were looking at a MERV 15 to an eight filter. Um, so the MERV value is how much filtration, um, and, and how much, um, dust, pollen, particles get through. The higher number, it, the better. Um, so they were looking at a 15 to eight. We are, um, already currently at an eight. And, uh, in talking to Bill, again, this is something where we're filtering as much as we can with the filters. If you go much higher, or if you go too high, you actually can overwork the units and/or you can, um, um, cause them to malfunction, because they're actually, can't push the air through those filters. You imagine, it's a, it's a tighter mesh. So we're already in, um, we're already on that standard as well. And then the third-pronged approach, the schools took, which is the UV sanitation, um, but Sam was not sure of the exact system that they were using. But, um, so again, this is our, our, um, our attempts at the same thing, to do the UV filtration. Um, so we are, um, um, that's what we're looking to do. Um, I talked to Bill. It, it, he does, they do not have, um, we're one of their few, um, local governments that they have, um, and we're somewhat of a unique system based on other commercial accounts they have. But he said they put these, a lot of these in restaurants, so they, some of their customers are dealing with the public, um, but they've done a lot of these in restaurants. And he says it's definitely, um, you know, they've done a lot more of these since COVID, um, as you would imagine. Um, so, um, that was where we're at. And then the other thing is, I actually misunderstood the way the system works. So in our, in our discussion last month, we were talking about the ion cell, and I think Dan had. And I think Dan had mentioned um whether we could turn off the ion cell versus the UV. And what the ion, what they're calling the ion cell is actually the UV lighting in this REM Halo system. So it runs um when the system is on. So that was a miss. Um I I when I was talking about the usage and the hours, um that was a misinterpretation on my part. So basically, the the runtime hours is um for most of the air handler units, it's every other year when they need replaced, and that's just the UV bulbs, which we talked about, or the ion cell. There's only one replacement. There's only one cost ongoing. It isn't that we have to replace the bulbs and we have to replace these ion cells. So that again was um a a misinterpretation. I didn't quite understand the way it worked. Um so that and that will be budgeted as we go. And then the other quote, we have two quotes on this because in Air Handler A, they're actually building a um a system to outfit that, to make it work. And that is um, that is not actually a REM Ha- REMI Halo system. It is actual just um a rack uh and system of UV bulbs that will um that they're building, they're custom building to um sanitize that air. So there was not enough, um I I think the way that these work, they would have had to um, they either couldn't outfit it at all or they would have had to put too many in in order to make that work. So they're they're custom building that UV array. And um those bulbs would be replaced each year, and that's about a five hundred dollar charge, um which I think is inconsequential as far as as maintenance um as we move forward.
So, basic question here, and I I just don't have the information. But how will we know it's effective? How will we know it's working?
Um, I didn't thought about that. Uh I think that we um, I I I guess as we go, if we have less, I don't know, um if we have less issues within the building, um I think it's just it's that added step. Um you know, it's just, like I said, I mean, we're already filtering the air. We're already doing, you know, we're already moving the air through the building. Uh I think it's just taking that extra precaution.
Yeah.
Um I guess if we never get a um a COVID case inside the library, um we could say it's working. But again, it even if we got one inside the lab, you know, people could still bring it in if we're, you know, we're allowing people in. It's just that, it's kind of just that extra measurement. It's that due diligence.
That's right.
Um, you know, and I and I um, I included in my board report the the new uh hold harmless uh legislation that went through. And if you read through some of that, you know, it's really um, this is the type of thing that would help our case, um saying that we took these various measures. Um this is, this is going to, you know, they um towards the end, they talk about the that you can't simply just do the recommendations. If all you do have, you did was um, you said, well, the governor made a recommendation to wear masks, and so we required masks. Um that isn't necessarily enough always, and this is just one of those extra things that we're doing, that we're we're going above and beyond those recommendations.
Sure.
And I think, you know, even with cold and flu season, beyond beyond COVID, um you you know, when I saw this, I was like, well, why why didn't we do this before, you know?
Right.
And um I think generally um we have a healthier building as it is. Of course, we have less people here, but I think the staff in general is, you know, there there aren't. We used to have um people on sick leave and sick days and 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 absent um throughout the year. Of course, probably more, a little bit more during cold and flu season. Um but Sherry even mentioned me the other day when she was leaving my office, you know, the 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 sick balances are going up. And that's that's not a bad thing. So I think overall, I think we're just seeing that um everything that's going on and that we're doing is helping.
Sure.
Just just a thought on the air quality. There are um testing devices that test the air quality. They're commercial-grade ones and residential ones. And I'm guessing that the um that the company that we work with probably has those available. And they could do a, maybe run a test before and after so that we could sort of compare and contrast and see the difference.
Yeah, I can talk to Bill about that.
Great. Anyone have any other questions about this?
No, it sounds good. Thanks for looking into it, Jamie.
No, thank you, Dan. I I never would have known or thought about ozone, so that was that was um, that was very good. And you know, it's one of those things um where the more we know, the 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 better off we are. I did talk to Bill again today and um we think that um based on their schedule, we should be able to get this in by the end of the month, assuming the board approves it, the end of October, um which I think is good timing. And I think that that still gets us in there before um the cold and flu season really kicks off. So I think it's still good timing with uh with getting it done.
Even the custom piece they could have done by then?
Yes. Yeah, he was not worried about um about the end of October.
Impressive. Okay, may I have a motion to approve the quote for the new air filtration system?
Also move.
Have a second?
This is Jenny.
Any discussion?
So that's a um, just for the motion, that's that's a total of um twenty-three thousand one twenty-four.
Yes.
I think we should include that amount in the um in the motion.
Right, you're right. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Mm-hmm.
That's both quotes added together. Gotcha. Thank you, Jamie. Will, did you, you got that figure?
Yeah, I got it.
Okay. Can you call the roll, please, for the approval?
Yes. Ms. Benarsky.
Yes.
Mr. Glover.
Aye.
Ms. Fisher.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Ms. James.
Yes.
Ms. Stickney.
Yes.
Mr. Sansoni.
Dave? Dave, are you there? Well, twenty twenty, what do we do in this instance?
Upstain.
Hey, yeah, there he is.
Yes, yes, I'm a yes. I was pressing every button I could.
Oh, we love life. All right, thank you, everyone. Jamie, how about their director's report, please?
Uh yeah, so up to this point, I've actually mentioned most of the stuff already. We'll we'll talk about the, we'll talk about the public elevator. Um I did mention the um the Blue Stone. Uh we did get the foundation check. Um I think the September PLF uh information I provided from LLC is in line with what Will was saying. And I think that's another indication. Uh I think it was Dave's question, um where how do we know what we're doing? And um I, this is something where, you know, I'm getting emails. Will and I both are getting we emails weekly from LLC, talking about projections. The Office of Budget Management um does their own projections. And I think that um as we've shown over the past years, we we take those, we take those recommendations and we use that as um as a thi- as our thinking process. We don't necessarily use those recommendations. I don't think we've ever actually gone off of those recommendations at all. And actually, this is one of the years where um we we went a little bit closer to what their recommendations were based on what we were seeing the the revenue trend to be. Um and this is the year that COVID hit and and we're we're probably, we might fall a little short. Um so even looking at um um those and and my initial discussion with Trent, I think what I'm aiming for is um looking at twenty eighteen numbers for revenues. But again, Will and I will be talking about that um as we get a little closer to that. So um and then, of course, I did mention the the hold harmless um um things, which I think that was something where I know, Audra, you and I had talked about initially right when COVID hit, and that was a concern. So that's that's definitely something that we were um very glad to see, uh that we we won't necessarily be um um, we we won't necessarily be sued, or at least we have a a good uh defense if somebody, I mean, anyone can sue, I guess. Um but we have a good defense um against that. So um the only other thing in my report was uh the public elevator door operator. And uh this is something that we had done to the staff elevators. It was done right around when COVID hit. So I think that we did that in March while we were closed, March and April. And uh that situation was a case where we actually had the elevator on fire service mode uh in order for the doors to work correctly. And that isn't something we can do on a on a regular basis. Um it's not proper. This is um a case where, as I talked to Greg, um you know, he said that they're they're getting close to failing. It it's it's age of equipment and they've done the adjustments as necessary. And they basically have the them adjusted all the way that they can. So then the next thing um potentially that would happen is they would fail or again, we would be in an instance where we would have to be um out of compliance because we'd have to have them in a fire service mode. So this is somewhat preventative maintenance, um you know, fixing it before it's a complete failure. Um this also puts a enhanced um infrared curtain, they call it a curtain, in. So it's going to put additional safety measures in the doorstop so that there's more infrared lasers that are shooting across so that if somebody is in the way of the door, the door won't close on them. So um I, you know, this is also increasing the safety of that elevator. And of course, right now, it probably is not being used as much. Um and it's probably not a bad time to have it down and to be able to use it. But uh in the course of uh normal activity, uh or at least previous activity, um this is a elevator that is used quite a bit.
So refresh my memory, that's an elevator that opens on either side, correct?
Yes, and this is just dealing with the front doors. Um so the doors, when you walk into the circulation area, this is the doors that you would see. It's also the doors that would empty into the mezzanine. Um so it's it's those doors.
Gotcha. Okay.
Jamie, is this something that was um noted in the ten-year building assessment?
Oh, question.
Um I think that what the specifically, I think as far as elevators, it says um maintaining elevators. But I do have it in front of me as I always um have this document readily available. So um I will try to get to the elevator part. They talk about electrical. They're not talking about um. I don't see it specifically mentioned, Cindy.
But it does talk about maintaining elevators, so it's contemplating either annual or ru- regular expenses for doing that sort of thing.
Exactly. Yeah, the elevators as they age are going to have different um different expenses.
Elevators are just one of those things that, you know, we can't function for the public without. And there are just very few vendors who are willing to do that kind of work on older elevators, for sure.
Yeah, so that's another point. Good, good. Um thanks for the reminder, Audra. Uh this was something where um when Audra and I met to discuss the the board meeting, um this is probably a little bit of a surprise to you. Um and it it is because we had this quote from Davis and Newcomer since April. And usually what happens in in the 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 method that we use is if they come and tell us really any issue that we come about, you know, maybe Greg brings it up and says, you know, we've got this problem. And so we try to find a quote or we try to find multiple quotes. And um or if um like if in the case of T L R or Davis and Newcomer, where they're coming out and doing normal preventative maintenance, they'll bring an issue to our attention. They'll give us their price to fix it. And then um a- another thing that I do is then I tell Greg to go try to find um additional quotes just to make sure that we're in line. And this is a case where uh he really couldn't get quotes. And the elevators are such um a a a special, like a niche industry that the few players in the game, what they really want is they want your elevator contract. They don't really necessarily want to fix your elevators. And um we did finally have one person say, uh reach out and say, hey, we'd be willing to do this. But they weren't even really willing to give us the quote uh unless we agreed to switch our service to them. And we have had very good um uh luck and um uh service with Davis and Newcomer. And their uh their monthly pricing for the elevators is um is relatively low. So it isn't necessarily something where we want to switch the contract. We just want to make sure that we're getting the best deal for this. So this is a case where um this is the really the only um price we have to go off of. And um as we've seen in the past and as we've compared Davis and Newcomer pricing, I think it's only been one other instance where they've actually been a little higher than competitors. Usually, um and actually what spurred us to change to Davis and Newcomer is um that they were lower than Schindler on uh when we were replacing the elevator shaft uh by quite a bit of money. And then uh in further discussion, talking to them about servicing the elevators, they were lower on that end as well. So that is why uh we're recommending just continuing with Davis and Newcomer and and doing this price with them.
Right. I mean, as a board, we always like to see multiple quotes, obviously. Um and it's the right thing to do uh using public funds. But sometimes, you know, it is what it is, and the industry is tight when it comes to these elevator contracts. So um did anyone have any questions regarding this? I know it's kind of.
Uh just just to follow up on Cindy's question real quick, um is uh so what they mentioned about elevators is they say there, it's a paragraph. There are three elevators servicing the building. Two elevators are public access and one is employees only. The elevators are in good working condition but could use some upgrades over the next few years. We recommend control modification and safety equipment review on a periodic basis to ensure the elevators are in peak operation, operating condition.
Okay. Thanks, Jamie.
Yep.
Pretty general recommendation there. Okay, Jamie, you are looking for an approval for this, correct?
Yes, for Davis and Newcomer, uh the sum of twenty-two thousand eight hundred dollars.
Which uh you know, I know, everyone, it's a lot of money, but really and truly, how can we not have these elev- we just can't. We can't have this elevator shut down. Um if there's no more discussion, may I have a motion to approve the upgrade of the front-facing door opening for twenty-two thousand eight hundred dollars with Davis and Newcomer?
This is Jill. So moved.
Thank you, Jill. A second?
It's Cindy. I'll second.
Thank you, Cindy. Any discussion regarding this? Will, will you call the roll, please?
Sure. Ms. Benarsky.
Yes.
Mr. Glover.
Aye.
Ms. Fisher.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Ms. James.
Yes.
Ms. Stickney.
Yes.
Mr. Sansoni.
Yes, I found the button this time.
Rough times. All right, thank you, everyone. The patron code of conduct that's been revised, Jamie, can we talk about that?
Yeah, I meant, so I'm going to turn it over to Trent to discuss that a little bit. And um and then he'll also do the personnel report. So that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you.
So when I reviewed the board packet earlier, I noticed this was in there three times, so I apologize for that.
A little confusing.
The uh.
I was trying to find a difference.
I know, me too.
The the last one um on page thirty-nine is is the one I'm going to be working off of.
The one, okay.
It has the uh.
Okay.
The recommendations, including what Jamie had after we worked on it. So this actually started last year after we had a um a patron incident that co- resulted in a indefinite permanent ban. Um and the board had asked that maybe we we consider or think about how um our policy reflects our practice around that. So I really wanted to review what some other libraries were doing and then tried to balance um director's discretion for a variety of um instances. that do come up with having something in place, providing a potential recourse for permanent bans or, you know, what people, give them a way to, in writing, to see what their options are, which it seemed to make a lot of sense. So you'll notice that since this was originally coming to the board in February, prior to COVID, the logo will need to be updated and the revised date of February 26, 2020 will be, if passed tonight, it would be tonight's date. But beyond that, just kind of walking through the major changes is updating some of the language so that it's consistent with our current terminology, patrons throughout, parents and caregivers throughout, to provide some of the more traditional or current language. And then at the first paragraph, adding a disruptive behavior kind of as a general catchall of behaviors that are not listed specifically below. And that being one that's, you know, any disruptive behavior would be not permitted. And then the major changes are those last few paragraphs, which are complete additions. So the basic premise would be to say that there is wide discretion based on past behavior and the severity of that incident to provide a ban at basically the director's discretion. However, bans beyond seven days, so those of more severe nature, either the person that was, you know, asked to leave the library and grounds needs to meet with, it ended up being myself, though in all likelihood it'd probably be Jamie and I, as we've done in the past. They would need to meet with us, or at least me, prior to being reinstated at the library. This also would work for juveniles where they would, if they were asked to leave an after-school incident for more than seven days, so it's severe or recurring frequently, they and/or their parent would need to meet with me and Jamie. So, and then finally, patrons that are kind of banned permanently have, it lays out the recourse for them. They would first, you know, appeal to the director. And there's a few factors listed based on like, if they've done any service or things to rectify what had originally caused the ban or there's, you know, amount of time that had passed since the ban. Those are factors that would be considered. And if they don't agree with his reassessment of the situation, they would be able to appeal to the board by mail to the library. So ultimate responsibility would fall to the board as kind of a nice justification and protection of Jamie and/or the director. Any questions?
Trent? Go ahead, Cindy. Now, the first inserted paragraph on the second page, so it's on page 40 of our board packet, I guess. I'm not sure if there's a typo in here or not. Disruptive patron is to leave library property for a period of time based on the severity of the offense, patrons' history, policy violations, and any other relevant factors. Do we mean to say the patrons' history of policy violations?
Disruptive patron, they have to leave library property for periods of severity based on the offense, the patrons' history.
It'd be, no, it could be their history of policy violations, but it could just be their general history. Sometimes there's issues where you have a patron that is disruptive. I mean, I guess it would be a history of policy violations, but I think the idea was that there could be separate instances there, but I could see your point as well, Cindy.
Okay.
And also in the second paragraph, the second line, it says juveniles are must. There's a typo there.
The R is crossed out.
You're looking at the wrong version.
Okay, sorry, I'm looking at the wrong page, okay.
Yeah, it is crossed out in the page 40.
Got it, now I'm on the right page.
To what Cindy said, I think the, I don't know, would you be taking into consideration any positive history too when making that decision? So like, you know, if you're making a decision on length of time to be suspended from the library and you're saying the patrons' history, policy violations, and any other relevant factors, if they've had a positive history, would that weigh in potentially on the length of time?
If they've been a 20-year user that we know and they've had one policy violation, they would not receive probably a seven-day ban.
Right.
So that, I guess that would factor into it, yeah.
I have a couple areas where we can replace customer with patron. So the next-to-last paragraph has two customers in it. If you want to just change those to patrons, the customers' completion and the customer that suggests. And then on the first page of the policy, it is vandalism will not be tolerated, persons responsible. You can change that to patrons' responsible, assuming that we're talking about patrons again, just for consistency.
Okay.
Also, Trent, that third inserted paragraph on the second page, it says, a patrons who has been permanently, and I think you mean patrons singular.
Could you just repeat what paragraph? Patrons, the third, the last?
Third paragraph. Third paragraph.
Okay.
On that second page.
I do like this policy, I think it lays it out so that it's pretty clear how we're going about this and we've given it thought. And that there's an opportunity for that patron to come back if they disagree with the decision. I think this is well done.
Any other comments?
Yeah. I have a process question. If I'm reading this correctly, the way I'm reading this, it's at the time a disruptive patron is asked to leave the library, that patron is told how long they're suspended from library use at that very moment?
Correct. With, I mean, there might be potential exceptions to that. There might be a, we will have to contact you depending on the severity of the offense. But the vast, I would say the 99% of the time, it's for the day. And then we know ahead of time if it's going to be more severe because it's usually recurrent. Or we have a few instances of any physical altercations is an automatic week. And that's where, if they meet with us, which is actually practiced currently, if it's more than a week, we said that they're going to talk to us to make sure they understand proper use of the library. It also kind of creates a slightly higher barrier. So I would say that's accurate, they would know at the time of leaving if what their ban is.
Okay, because that's the way it reads, I just wanted to make sure that's what you meant, okay. And as a juvenile, is anybody 17 and younger?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions, anyone? If not, may I have a motion to approve the revised patron code of conduct?
So moved, this is Jenny.
Thank you, Jenny. I'll second Will, Audra. Any discussion? Will, will you call the roll, please?
Ms. Benarsky?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Dan?
Sorry, had two mutes on, aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. James?
Yes.
Ms. Stickney?
Yes.
Mr. Sensoni?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, very good. Well done, Trent, thank you so much.
Thank you. Moving on to the personnel reports, there is a separation to reports. Ralph Benacci of Building Services, he was with us about two years, I think, maybe not quite. He has returned to his previous employer. Fit was the major issue. I was reading through his exit interview and it was very interesting because he had high marks for morale in the library and fair treatment of employees. He just, he didn't feel like it was the best fit for him. And the position he goes back to has some more independent work and it did come with a pay increase, actually. So both of those could be major factors in it as well. But he had some positive things to say about the library, just that he wanted something different, I think.
Okay, all right, good to know, thank you for that information. Okay, may I have a motion to approve the personnel report if there's no questions about it?
This is Jill, so moved.
Thank you, Jill, second?
I'll second, Dave.
Thank you, Dave, any discussion? Will?
Ms. Benarsky?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Aye.
Ms. Fisher?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. James?
Yes.
Ms. Stickney?
Yes.
Mr. Sensoni?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. Did anyone have any questions about all of our statistics, such as they are? Or any of the departmental reports?
I did have a question and I was hoping Peter could answer about his quarantine checkouts, but he's not here. Maybe Jamie or Trent, you would know. If I'm understanding Peter's report correctly, there are about 360 patrons, 600 items, page 61.
Right.
Totalling over $12,000 in lost bills. This is about half of the quarantine checkouts that we saw over June-July report. What's the next step for those people? I mean, I would like to hope that we could do something before we send it to collections. Can we even think about sitting and making calls to these folks?
We're, so we sent something, we sent a notice out about a month ago and a lot of those were returned. And so we're discussing what our next steps are. We're leaning towards another notice and/or, you know, we really don't want to, you know, have them go to collections, Cindy, basically.
I agree, right.
It would, not only would it be, it would look like poorly upon us, but it would also cost us, you know, because, you know, we pay for those accounts that go. So we are still working on what those next steps are. We're just trying to get the materials back, honestly. That's kind of where we stand.
Do we have an idea if there are any bad actors? Like is this, are there a few people that are doing this or is this a lot of, I mean, I saw the statistics, but there may be a few bad actors in there.
Yeah, and so eventually at that point, Dan, that would be something where, you know, I think eventually we probably would. We might have to turn it over and I think, you know, but going through the various steps that we can right now, I think that we still want to act in good faith and just, you know, say, hey, they're laying around. I mean, I know, I just got a notice today and I'm like, I don't even know where the heck these books, like even my own stuff. Like the chaos of COVID and you don't necessarily put stuff where you normally put them. And I'm like, how the heck am I going to find these things? So I know even in my case that, you know, there's a couple of things still. So, you know, I think you're probably right, Dan, there could be a couple, but I would think that it's probably only a couple.
I think it's.
Or a small percentage, I would say.
Yeah, the largest figure here is for books, which seems like an unlikely bad actor candidate.
Correct.
I think, I know a lot of people came and checked out the 50 items the week before the library closed. And I think they're still reading those books, honestly.
So very true, very true. Okay, any other questions about the departmental reports?
This is Jill, not about the report, I just had a question on how everything has gone with this first week back at school in the library. As we look at the conduct report, I was thinking, how is that going with middle schoolers coming over or any other, you know, school-aged kids coming over to the library afterwards? Have we had that happen at all? And just curious how that's going so far.
We really had no issues. I think if you, you know, I go out around lunchtime and of course I see all the kids biking to school. You know, I see the kind of the shift change, so to speak. You know, had I not, if you don't go outside the library at that time, I don't think we would have even known that that was going on. I mean, so I think that, you know, we've had no issues.
How is it working exactly? Is it half-day for certain grades and the other half of the day for other?
No, it's, so actually. Addie Olander was actually in the library earlier and I stopped to talk to her. So every kid is going to school every day. They just go for, so they do half a day of in-school, whether it's AM or PM. And then the other half of their day is virtual. And the way that they divided it up was by last name, I believe. So if you're a certain letter of the alphabet, you go in the morning. And if you're the other part of the alphabet, you go in the afternoon.
Fascinating.
But they thought it was, and actually, when she said it, she said their thinking was they felt it was best to have the kids at least have some contact with the teacher each day, which actually in my experience with what we're doing, I think that's actually a good thing that they did. At first, when I saw their plan, I was like, this seems weird. But actually going through it, I think they had the good foresight to do that. And Addie attributed that to Liz Anderson.
Okay, interesting. Well, we'll see how it starts to play out when the weather gets worse and kids may need a place to wait for a ride or whatever. See if we'll have more kids come into the library like normal.
Right, yeah.
Okay. It might test our 30-minute rule.
Well, again, the 30-minute rule is a guideline. Nobody's putting a clock on anyone. And really even to the extent where if a child were, you know, if they were waiting for a ride and it was a cold day, I can't see that we necessarily would force a kid out into the cold. So, you know, it's one of those things where this is the way we'd like it to happen, but we'll do what we can in the actual circumstances to make it work.
Yeah. As long as we're being fair and safe with everyone else in the library too, right?
Correct.
Yeah, for sure. Okay, very good, any other questions? I'm hearing some feedback, is anybody else hearing that?
Yeah, someone's got a didgeridoo.
Who knew, Wednesday nights are didgeridoo night. Okay, president's report, I do have a couple of things. We were talking right before the meeting when everybody was kind of coming on about where we are as far as meeting in person versus continuing with the virtual meetings. And I am completely open. I think before we were kind of thinking maybe, you know, when things were still a little strange and, but we were trying to open up the library a little bit, I think we were kind of thinking, well, the board should kind of optically set the tone that the library is a safe space and it's, you know, fine to go in there and meet at a safe distance. I think we're past that time now. I think the public feels, you know, really good about the library. So I don't know if that's such a concern anymore. But I am completely open to how everyone else feels. If this just works better for everyone right now and it's their comfort zone, you know, absolutely, we can talk all this through. So I would like to invite you guys to either. you know, absolutely, we can, we can talk all this through. So I would like to invite you guys to either chat or text or use Outlook and email me about any thoughts you have about this going forward. And we'll just be very flexible and see where it takes us. We, you know, we're very fortunate that we have this much flexibility. So just wanted to put that out there. Kind of building off that, then I wanted to remind you about our joint board meeting next Wednesday, the seventh, at five PM at the Beach School with the Board of Education. Again, that is an in-person meeting. So I just want to make sure that those of you who have said you would come still feel comfortable with that. Again, this is a, a meeting that we traditionally have every year, but there's nothing traditional about this year. And if we feel more comfortable putting it off, we feel more comfortable putting it off. So I want to do what the board wants to do. This is, you know, a courtesy visit between the two boards and it's not worth any level of anxiety. So again, just reach out to me, let me know how you feel about it and I'll get in touch with John Fancher, the president of the Board of Ed.
Audra, can I ask a question? Do you know how many people, how many people total would be in that meeting, that in-person meeting, an S, a rough estimate?
I know, I really do not know. It's a, it's a committee of the whole meeting, isn't it, Jamie, that we're going to be attending? So does that mean public participation?
Right. So there's five, there's five board members. There's usually, there's five and then there's Mick, Liz, Sam, and Greg.
Greg.
So that would take them to nine. So that would be nine on their side and then we have our seven plus me would be eight. Although I think that there's two that have already opted out. And Will, I guess that we would leave it up to you, but I don't believe you've attended one of those to this point.
I haven't. If you guys wanted me to be there, I would. If I don't have to be there, I won't.
I'd say don't do it because the Danish isn't that good.
Yeah, so, and I don't know about the public aspect of it, Jenny. I don't know if it's, the committee of the whole meeting is open to the public. But I can certainly check on that and try to get because I think that is very pertinent information for us to know before we head over there. I mean, it's weird enough it's in a school building, although I think that's just the daycare center. Does anyone know what happens in the beach school?
It's the school for, that they, they have the preschool class, the pre-K class.
And is that, is that in session right now? I mean, not that it would be at five o'clock, but it is?
Yes, it is. They are, they are in person, full day.
Full day?
Well, there's, there is, there are people in the building full day, so they, morning and afternoon.
Good to know.
So yes.
So yes, there are a couple of things I need to check on, it sounds like.
Well, I guess that my, the other thing that would be good to check on is I, what the governor's stance is on meetings, some meeting size. I know that it has changed up and down, but I'd like to try to adhere to that if at all possible.
I think, as far as I know, we're still at, we're still at no more than ten.
That was my understanding as well. So that's why this kind of feels a little strange to me, but that information
That is a great point.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a great point, Jenny.
This is all starting to become a little more clear as to what we might be doing next week. So stay tuned, everyone, and watch your Outlook email, please. All right, I'll make those notes and Krista can help me get in touch with, with Jenny over at the school board, right, Jamie?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll be in touch with her tomorrow then. The only other thing that I had to mention was I got a phone call at home from a patron singing the praises of Megan Oliver and I just wanted to pass that along. She was very helpful recommending books that she got to know this patron and recommended books that Megan had actually read herself. And this patron was just over the moon at the service, so please pass that along to Megan. I was really proud, proud and happy to take that call.
Good, yes. Yeah, I was a little worried there when you said you got a call from a patron.
Hey, listen.
That's, that's the kind of calls you should take.
Yes, but when a patron starts out and says, I was just at the library, yeah. Yes, it, it's not a great, not a great feeling, but it turned out really great, great. Okay, committee reports, anything from buildings and grounds?
We did not meet, so there's nothing to report. Other than I would like to say that I appreciate the job that Jamie, Trent, and Will are doing.
Very good, thank you. We all do. Personnel, Dave?
No meeting.
Okay, thank you. Any new business tonight?
Nope.
All right, very good. Thank you. May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
This is Jill, so moved.
Thank you, Jill. Second?
Melissa, I second.
Thank you, Melissa. I guess we don't need to do a roll call for adjournment, do we? Okay. Thank you, everyone, so much. I'll be in touch about next week's board meeting, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.